Welcome to the March 2nd, 2023 Mobile City Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda will be called, the applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions if any, and members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against an item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a speaker will hear a loud beep indicating one minute left, and at that point, we ask that you summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, an applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium at the bottom of the stairs, speak into the microphone, give your name and your address for our minutes. Direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, an applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all the applications on the agenda, commission will then go into deliberation, where we will discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of that voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing arise, the chairman will have the discretion to either allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. That does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved, but depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there's only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. It's a reminder that the planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments, or PUDs, and it is the planning commission's recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decision. At this time, please turn all your cell phones off or to silent, and if you do have to take a call, step outside. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. Call the roll, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Alan Cameron, Ms. Jenners Perdenson, Mr. Carlos Gant, Ms. Shirley Sessions,
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison,
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Scott Jones, Ms. Susan Carley, Mr. Kirk Matei. We have a quorum, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda passes. We will move on to holdovers, agenda item number one, 3603 Kent Road, Pinewood River Subdivision. Staff has recommended the application for denial due to the three reasons. Is the applicant present?
Brett Orell with Poly Surveying, representing the applicant, Mr. Harper. We were here about, I think, two months back, and it was recommended, based on the new regs, to hold this over. Looks like the result has come back pretty well the same. When Mr. Harper purchased the property, just want to remind you, there were two homes present on this property with two independent water meters. Since then, the home that would lie, I guess the main home in the front, has been demoed with proper permits, and his intent is to build two new homes in this area. So he met with staff. Originally, there was a conversation in keeping the existing two structures to do a flag, flag lot, which flag lots really weren't present in the area. I felt the fact that he was removing the structures, it was more appropriate to look at an equal split of this property. So it's 100 foot wide. We've looked at 50-foot wide lots that would be redeveloped. You can see that there's not a lot of, obviously, these are bigger estate-sized lots, and I know that this has now fell into what is being deemed a suburban development or suburban district. It's kind of new to me, but that's pretty subjective as to how that's established. I would just like to point out that in this area, you know, I've spoken to Mr. Harper, he's done a lot of redevelopment, new construction here. You know, most of the homes range from, you know, 80 to 150,000. A lot of investors have these homes as rentals. We're looking to put two new homes in here. Another challenge that you have in this area is flood zone. The old, old homes are subject to higher rates, and that is continuing to rise, making it unaffordable, unaffordable for people to remain in those homes. So with redevelopment, these, these would meet the requirement, exceed that requirement, and actually have people living and actually getting some growth in this area. I think it's important to look at that as we evaluate this application and future applications to this area. I believe it's going to be something that needs to happen to revitalize this area and have some new growth. The population is here, my family's from that area. It's aging, they've moved out, getting a lot of dilapidated homes. I think new construction is what's needed, and I'm asking that any restriction, whether it's the lot width or width-to-depth ratio, the lot size, all be considered to be waived and this application be approved to allow two new homes to go in at this location.
A question for staff. We held over regarding understanding the new subdivision requirements. What changed on the minimum lot size and the width-to-depth ratio with the new subdivision regulations?
With the new regulations, the width-to-depth ratio remains, I believe, the same. However, as part of the UDC, the new zoning ordinance, we divided the city into urban and suburban districts. In the urban districts, which are essentially areas that were platted prior to 1950 and were perhaps serviced by a streetcar up to the 1930s, we allow lot sizes with a minimum width of 50 feet. Elsewhere in the city, such as down Doffin Island Parkway, out in West Mobile, we kept the minimum lot width of 60 feet, which we've had in the subdivision regulations for decades. So essentially, the new regulations that would apply to this site would be very much like those that would have applied last week.
Is it possible, or have we ever done a waiver, just in thinking of helping spur new growth, to allow the removal of a subdivision requirement as long as construction took place or permits were pulled within a certain amount of time? I mean, that kind of seems more of a, something we would have done in a PUD or something like that, but does that make sense?
Well, under the subdivision regulations, the planning commission has the authority to waive both the minimum lot width requirement and the width-to-depth ratio.
But that would be a permanent thing on the plat,
Yes.
Not subject to any sort of time?
If the plat is recorded within the standard one-year period, then that becomes what applies to that.
Right. But unlike a PUD, we can't establish that permits are pulled within a certain amount of time or anything along those lines?
Any further questions for Mr. Orell on this application?
Yeah, can I just add one more quick comment?
Please do.
I know that we were speaking to how the districts were created. Just really want to point out, you know, I don't know about the streetcar and all this, but there are 50-foot lots all over the city of Mobile. I mean, everywhere. Nick knows that. We spoke about that heavily when I came down, when we were discussing comments for the subdivision regs before they were approved. And so I just, I just feel like, really, if we're thinking about moving this area forward, we really need to, there are lots like this all over the place, and for someone to come in and have an opportunity to reinvest in this area and actually have some new growth, new houses, new rooftops going up compared to the 60-year-old homes that have been there dating back to Brooklyn, how do we, how do we revitalize this area? So I just want you to consider that, and I believe it's very important on how we move this entire region, you know, forward.
Let me, let me share, Mr. Chairman, if I may, share a perspective.
Go ahead, Nick.
You know, this is, I understand where Mr. Orell's coming from, and obviously, support development, you know, support development wholeheartedly, but if you took every single one of these lots in here, and you cut them in half or cut them in thirds and put more houses on it, you would have 60-year-old infrastructure dealing with, you know, density that it couldn't handle. We have parts of the town where that has, that has exactly happened, and we have flooding, and we have the drainage structures that can't handle it. So it's a delicate balance. Yeah, I mean, I think generally, everybody is very supportive of development, but it can't be the development first and then the infrastructure second. And I realize this is just maybe the first one, but as I look at the plat here, there are hundreds of lots around that surrounding area that have not been subdivided since their original, you know, breaking them down into a, you know, a single-family lot. But if you did that, if you cut this one in two and the 30 or 40 around it into, the next thing you know, everybody's got a retention pond in their backyard or underground storage, and you don't have, you don't have the supporting roadway infrastructure that can handle it. I wish I knew where the balance was to find it exactly right. I mean, sitting here today, I don't, but it's a challenge, but you know some other parts of towns where lots have gotten to where they were big estate lots, you know, acres in size, and now they're postage stamps, and the whole postage stamp is impervious area. That's where we experience the most amount of flooding and we get the most amount of complaints because the infrastructure is still, you know, 1960s, 1970s, or even earlier. It just can't, it can't handle that much impervious area, so you can't have one without the other. And really, the infrastructure needs to come first to support a more dense, dense development. Just an observation, I think, you needed to hear from me.
And if I could just make quick, just my observation in return. So obviously, these are bigger lots. The beauty of it is the length width, or excuse me, the length, the width-to-depth. So they have a lot of depth in which there is a ton of green space that would maintain that same natural innate quality. Also, there are tons of wetlands. That's why a lot of these aren't developed. This was done back when regulation really wasn't a tremendous thing. We're in flood zones. A lot of other challenges. I think the sheer size being the depth is very important. It helps balance that, understand the infrastructure that's there, but let's be, let's face it, the city's not going to be putting in new infrastructure. Can't have, developers can't go in and do that, so we're kind of stuck. So are we going to be stuck here 100 years from now with, you know, no housing? I mean, I just, I think we've got to think ahead.
Well, no, you know, we've seen developers on many occasions, unfortunately, over time, acquire lots, acquire all the lots in the subdivision, tear it down and rebuild it new, and build it to a modern standard. Probably the very reason we don't have some of the drainage problems down here that we have in other parts of town is because, because of the green space. And as you know, there's a 4,000 square foot, you know, maximum, you know, to get a single-family, you know, half a David sign, you know, where you can build a house without having all of those extra infrastructure requirements. And so, I mean, that kind of is the balance point. It, I mean, it's obviously something I'm sure we'll continue to talk about for years ahead, but it's challenging. And this just is reminiscent of parts of town that are now chopped up, and you've squeezed so many houses and so many driveways and parking lots and swimming pools and roof decks, there's flooding problems. And to cure that is multimillion-dollar efforts, which are, you know, had that not been allowed, and these were big estate houses, state homes sitting on a two-acre, three-acre lot, downstream flooding probably wouldn't be present. So we'll all continue to try to find, find the correct balance as we go forward.
Real quick question, just related to Nick. Dividing, subdividing this lot would double the allowed impervious area or the building pad site? Is that what you're?
You know, effectively, what would, what would come in, you know, it puts, it puts a strain on our engineering department to keep track of all these, but, you know, you would start with a 4,000, 4,000 square foot impervious footprint per lot. And oftentimes, we look if there's downstream, downstream issues with that. If you get to like three lots or more, we're generally trying to make you, make you do a, treat it as a subdivision where you build, go ahead and build the retention end to cover all the lots. It gets hard, and there's some of these that probably get through the process, but certainly the guy that goes in there and he builds a 1,500 square foot house, and he's got enough driveway, and he gets to the 4,000, and then he has to, then he wants to add the garage, and he finds out he's got to build a retention pond that's going to cost $20,000 or $30,000. He doesn't like that answer, and so it's, it's a challenge.
I've been sitting here and listening, and it's interesting because down from me on East Drive, I've watched this actually happen, and I don't even know how it happened because I, I don't think it, this body would have approved it. But to Nick's point, I've watched a two-acre site develop into 23, two- and three-bedroom townhomes. I've watched a lot split, just like we're talking about at the end of East Drive, and they've put two homes there. And they tried to sell that, and the height of the flurry last year, and it was the only house that wouldn't sell because of the layout of that lot, and it just is not conducive to a quality of life like the rest of the neighborhood around it. You've got a shared driveway in the backyard, you've got another house in the front yard, you've got a house for the, the house that's in the back. It creates some significant challenges for a quality of life issue, and I think the problem is, when you come in after the fact and you've already got an established neighborhood, and you're trying to change the organizational makeup and construct of that neighborhood like this, and you set a precedent and others start changing, then you've got some significant challenges as far as the impacts to that neighborhood as a whole. I just think that, in theory, it sounds great. In reality, I've watched it, and it just didn't turn out well for the homeowners that now are stuck with an issue of, what do we do with this thing? And I think they ended up renting it out, not able to sell it. But I just think that if they're going to do this, I think Nick's right, you've got to come in as a complete development, and the whole thing's got to change instead of piecemealing one or two lots at a time, because I think that's going to present more significant challenges.
Real quick, I know we're spending a lot of time on this, but I do agree, as Nick said, this is going to be a continuous issue through the city for years to come, as we see the redevelopment of our city happening. There doesn't seem to be a lot of 4,000 square foot first-floor houses in this area. I would have to assume,
12, 1400.
Yeah. So, I mean, is there no way, the whole stormwater issue you're talking about could absolutely be put at ease by a square foot cap on the build structure on these reduced lot sizes? If that's the issue, we're talking about a stormwater, that's all we're talking about is impervious area. Is there, is there a device for us to limit the square foot impervious build?
I don't think that through the subdivision regulations, you have that authority. There's no minimum or maximum house size required, and some of that is based on federal
Anything further, Mr. Atchison? Is anyone else here in the audience to speak for this agenda item?
Hello, my name is Ellis Harper.
Your address?
1312 Donaway Drive.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate currently, well, not currently now, because one of them's have been torn down, but there were two houses already on this property. Obviously, as E4 stated, two water meters on this property. I mean, it's already two houses there before we purchased it. It was taxed as two individual pieces of property, even when I went to get the permit to tear one of them down. They pointed out that it was two houses on this property. I have pictures of the second one that still sits there at the present, and I'm just, you know, at this point, trying to figure out, you know, is it aesthetics? Is it, I mean, just, I understand from an infrastructure vantage point, I definitely can understand that, but for me, the individual with, I don't see much changing because there was already two houses there. And I'm just, you know, this is obviously an area that I've, I've actually built housing. I'm a prisoner of this same scenario, a few streets away from this particular property. And, you know, one of the purposes behind this, I've, obviously, I've helped younger couples to achieve home affordability with these houses because of, I'm not, I don't have the overall burden of, of having to shell out a great deal of money as it relates to going out in other areas purchasing lots. So this was a perfect opportunity for me. So I'm just wondering, hopefully, that we can come up with a happy meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Any comments, questions from commissioners for the applicant? Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? We'll move on in the public hearing session to number two on the agenda item. Again, a holdover, 650 Michigan Avenue, Alabama Power Company, recommended for tentative approval with nine listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Oh, excuse me, subdivision and a PUD, excuse me, a rezone. Is the applicant present? Oh, okay. Are you in agreement on the subdivision and the nine conditions for the subdivision? Are you in agreement on the approval and the listed conditions for the rezone? Is anyone else here to speak for agenda item number two? Anyone here to speak against agenda item number two? Seeing none, we'll move on. Number three, on the agenda, northwest corner of Range Line Service Road in Demetropolis, Range Line Crossing, Phase Five subdivision, recommended for tentative approval on the subdivision with seven listed conditions, and the PUD recommended for approval with five findings of facts and six listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd? In agreement. Applicant's present and in agreement. Anyone else here to speak for agenda item number three? Anyone here to speak against agenda item three? We'll move on. We have an extension, agenda item number four, 5,400 Hamilton Boulevard, extension for a subdivision at the S. Feller Industrial Park and a PUD. Been recommended for a one-year extension on both the subdivision and the PUD. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the extension and that future extensions will be unlikely? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is anyone else here to speak for this extension at 5,400 Hamilton Boulevard? Anyone here to speak against it? We'll move on to new subdivision application, agenda item five, 265 and 515 South Royal Street, CSA Container Yard number two, recommended for tentative approval with eight listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Come on down.
Before the applicant starts, Mr. Chairman, I want to point out an error in the staff report. South Royal Street is on the major street plan, and according to the major street plan that has most recently been adopted, requires an 80-foot right-of-way. However, in 2017, there was a comment in a staff report for a site two blocks to the north that said that due to pending revisions to the major street plan, staff would no longer recommend additional right-of-way being required along South Royal Street. Therefore, staff would recommend that the planning commission waive any right-of-way dedication requirement along South Royal Street as part of any approval.
Is that just reference to the first condition? Where it says dedication?
It would just be at the beginning of conditions, you're waiving the right-of-way dedication requirement section, and we'll put in the correct number there.
Okay. Is the applicant understanding of that?
Yes.
All right. Name and address for a minute, please.
Patrick Garsteck, Kohl's Murphy Glover, 457 St. Michael Street. The corner radius would still be required, Bert? Condition number three, we would like to revise to propose a 20-foot side street setback there on Royal Street or as approved by the Board of Adjustment.
You say 20? It says 25-foot minimum.
We'd like to make that 20-foot minimum. I think that's the minimum allowed by the planning.
The zoning ordinance allows for a side yard setback along the street to be 20 feet if the property to the south of it, in this case, has a driveway access, 20 feet would be the maximum reduction allowed for setback. If he wants anything less than 20 feet, then he has to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So by requesting 20 feet in this condition of the subdivision regulations, and then adding the, or as approved by the Board of Adjustment, that gives him the flexibility to at least try to get a reduced setback on South Royal Street. The proposal is that his front yard would be facing Charleston, and this would become his side yard, side street setback.
And Charleston still have the 25-foot.
You're just looking for five feet on Royal Street and...
Or as approved by the Board of Adjustment.
And you're having to go before the BOA anyway?
No, in order to have less than the 20 feet, which would be allowed by the zoning ordinance, because it's a zoning ordinance function, at that point, he has to go to the Board of Adjustment to get that aspect waived or reduced. We can't, the planning commission in terms of setbacks can only deal with the subdivision setback requirement, which is 25 feet. So what the proposal is, is to waive the 25-foot subdivision setback requirement to allow the standard 20-foot of the zoning ordinance or further reduction as approved by the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Garsteck, any other items on the conditions listed other than those?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for agenda item number five? Anyone against? Moving on, agenda item six, 101 East I-65 Service Road South, Walmart subdivision, recommended for tentative approval, eight listed conditions. Applicant is present. Are you in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement. Anyone else here to speak for agenda item number six? Anyone against? Move on, number seven, 765 St. Anthony and 163 North Bayou Street, the Envision Legacy subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with 11 listed conditions. Mr. Orell.
Yes, Brett Orell with Poly Surveying. Have reviewed everything on the staff report. What we'd like to do is look at item number one in regards to the dedication of a corner radius there. It doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood, it's not necessary, and I've been speaking with the downtown alliance about this as well. They, they agree, and we're asking if that be removed, just stricken from the report itself, where the configuration would remain as is and as presented. So that would be item, the first thing to address. The second would be item number seven. Item number seven states that Lot Two, which is the southern lot, we are being asked to basically not have a curb cut. However, there is a curb cut there existing and being utilized, and we are not redeveloping this site. We are simply taking three parcels and now creating two legal lots of record that run down a zero lot line between, to separate off two buildings. So we are asking that that be waived and, or just stricken from this to amend it to say, subject to existing curb cut on Lot Two. So those are my two requests as part of this application.
Brett, is that existing curb cut, obviously, front St. Anthony?
Actually, there, well, North Bayou is the, see the gravel drive here on Lot Two? And item number seven states it's prohibited, so we're just asking it to be allowed to remain as currently configured.
Okay, so that's just for the center block building, the new lot?
Correct, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be used for access for any, any other reason that I could imagine.
Does Lot One have a curb cut?
It appears there is a curb cut, it just appears it's not active.
Could we hear from Travis?
Staff.
My chance on this?
Well, I have a comment first. This site is located within the downtown development district, which has different standards for the development of property. This is in a special district warehouse area. According to the downtown... According to the Downtown Development District regulations, curb cut shall be where the property frontage is a minimum of fifty-four feet in width and this proposed Lot Two, I believe, is only thirty-eight feet wide. So according to the Downtown Development District regulations, the curb cut is not allowed. They can apply, however, to the Board of Adjustment for a variance to allow that property to have a curb cut. Additionally, for Lot One, it's also in the special district warehouse. The Downtown Development District regulations state that a curb cut shall not occur on a primary frontage, St. Anthony, when you have a secondary frontage of North Bayou Street. So per the D D D regulations, if this Lot One were to have a curb cut, it would have to be on the secondary frontage rather than on St. Anthony Street.
And Bert, does the subdivision trigger the reduction or the removal of the non-conforming status?
Well, subdividing is changing the status of the property to a compliance status or triggering that requirement. Now again, because of the Downtown Development District requirements being in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission cannot waive them, it has to go to the Board of Adjustment.
What's the expected action of the applicant? To go away with the curb cut and put a curb back in place where there's one that doesn't exist?
Well, in this case, in terms of the condition, it can be, you know, either removal of the curb cut or a successful obtaining of a variance.
As the recommendations are written, yes, he would have to remove the curb cut, remove the existing curb cut.
Essentially.
We don't have the authority to change that.
Well, certainly the condition can be changed to allow him the option of going to the Board of Adjustment rather than completely prohibiting it.
But that's our only authority?
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, if that's the direction we're going, I would like to offer up a solution for the St. Anthony. It appears to me I have another application, the next one where we're going to talk about declaring which frontage is frontage. In this case, can we declare that Lot One, its frontage is on North Bayou, therefore, by right allowing the curb cut on St. Anthony to remain and us pursuing a variance on Lot Two? I believe that would meet that regulation and requirement.
The regulation says that the curb cut shall not be on the primary frontage if a secondary frontage is available. So the house on Lot One fronts St. Anthony Street and that, I believe that's addressed as well, so that's the primary frontage.
And what did you say about the width? Didn't you say a minimum of fifty-four feet?
Fifty-four feet, so the side property line as well for Lot One is where the property is at least fifty-four feet wide to allow a curb cut.
Lot Two wouldn't, Lot Two wouldn't be able to have a curb cut regardless, I mean-
Without a variance.
Yeah, they didn't have the width in either, neither.
That's correct.
In Mr. Orrell's suggested workaround, what does establish a primary frontage? The address or a door or what, I mean, what is the definition of a primary frontage?
Well, the Downtown Development District intends for the primary entrance to the building to face the primary frontage. In this case, the current existing primary entrance to the existing building for Lot One is from St. Anthony Street. So that would typically establish that as the primary frontage.
So it's not addressed based, but what is actually intended as the entrance of the structure?
That is part of the formula for that, yes. Thank you.
Sorry, Jay, just trying to get clarification, just so I fully understand. So the intent of the D D D, based on what I'm hearing, is on-street parking unless you have a certain width? That's the full intent in terms of parking, correct?
Or if you have the option to put your curb cut on a secondary street, corner lot, they want it off of the primary frontage.
So in this case, I understand what you're saying about, you know, St. Anthony. When we think about Lot Two, and like I said, I'm going to come back to, we're not redeveloping the site, this is a transaction that's happening. If we look at the building on Lot Two, if that were to be expanded to then fully come down to the southern property line and be an entire building, let's say we expanded that footprint, then that gravel drive has to, you know, has to go away, so the curb cut would then go away. So still having a hard time understanding why an existing, you know, curb cut is now going to have to come in, get right-of-way permits, backfill in the event we don't get a variance. And it sounds like we're being told that's going to happen on St. Anthony as well regardless. So it's a lot of additional work on someone to get through permits, we're talking about probably four months to get something done for a sales transaction when there's absolutely no development happening at this time. It's just hard for me to wrap my head around that process and try to understand it. So I'm just trying to get clarification, look at some options of what would happen in the future potentially.
That's reasonable commentary, but my understanding was it would just take a B O A application if the curb cut is existing. You mentioned right-of-way, I'm not sure you would have to trigger a right-of-way.
Well, if I understood the comment Bert was saying, Bert, are you saying that on St. Anthony, the existing curb cut that is there cannot be utilized?
I'm explaining what the Downtown Development District regulations state is that your property having two street frontages where you have a secondary frontage, the curb cut should be located on the secondary frontage. You're going through the subdivision process here, creating lots, which is then triggering the need for compliance.
Okay, can we go back to the other sheet, just so, I think I have you now. So what you're saying is that the-
Yes, you can get variances for both lots, one and Lot Two, right.
Okay, okay.
If there's a regulation in the zoning ordinance, you can apply for a variance.
And I think from your addressing standpoint, your building on Lot Two, you know, presumably, say you sold that or did something different with it, that is now going to have an address on North Bayou Street. It would not have an address to St. Anthony, when you show up to our office to get an address issued to you, it's not going to be given an address for St. Anthony, it's going to be given an address for North Bayou. Not in theory, but in reality, it's two separate buildings now.
Right.
When you separate it out of line.
But in theory, like I think what you were saying, Bert, was that Lot One, if on that, I don't know what the distance is, that western side there, that's where, how the code reads, you could have a curb cut there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the board has granted variances since the D D D was adopted for these types of things.
Okay.
We're done with that for a second. In regards to the corner radius, I know we've had this discussion a lot, especially in the Downtown Development District where these tight corners exist and are even promoted with the setback requirements. I thought the, either it was the U D C or the new sub rules that we're going to remove and kind of create an overlay where we didn't require this radius dedication in this area of town. Is that a misunderstanding or is that something?
Well, the way the condition number one is written, it gives it discretion to engineering if it determines based on site conditions that a radius would be required. If the city engineer decides that no radius required, then the existing conditions can remain.
Nevertheless, it'll be recorded as a dedication if someone in the future wanted to encroach on that dedication, they would have to-
If it's required by the city engineer, yes.
We've discussed this before and I know it probably gives the Downtown Alliance a little bit of heartache because it's always in there, we always have overturned it. But I believe that it's a good practice to leave it in there because it forces us to look at it based on what business might be going there, what type of vehicles. So there are some potential scenarios where we would actually, we would actually need it or some potential scenarios, you know, where there's trees that are, that exist where maybe you need to try to, you need to try to capture some little piece of real estate so that the appropriate infrastructure is within the right-of-way. I do think though, more often than not, we're probably going to strike the comment down. And I just, I hope they would take some comfort in knowing that that's the general stance that's going to take place. But leaving it in there as a, as a kind of a standard comment forces the engineers and the planners to look at it, to revisit it to see if it really is a issue or not. I would be scared if that wasn't in there, you know, and there was, and there was some need for it that we might just miss it.
So just so I understand, as I'm sitting next to the, ahead of the engineering department, if they demoed this structure and built a new structure that had some sort of encroachment into that dedication, what would be the process of that? It would just go through y'all's office and be waived or would they have to come back for this board or potentially get a variance to encroach on that dedication?
Well, most of the time what it would be, the purpose of that extra, that extra right-of-way would be to improve the radius. Right now, what you've got is very, very tight radiuses downtown that might have worked when you were driving Model Ts, but they don't work when you're driving Suburbans and box trucks, you know, those big vehicles. And so, so often you see those curbs and those corners driven over and they get destroyed because the radiuses are not large enough to accommodate the vehicles that are typically navigating those streets today. And it's a tough trade-off, you want the tight radiuses so people will slow down and so, you know, it's more pedestrian friendly. But then it becomes not friendly for the vehicles that are trying to provide, you know, the goods and services to those particular things. So it's a, it's another one that's kind of tough to find the appropriate balance. You could have a scenario if you had, if you had something downtown that was some sort of small distribution center and you had a lot of big box trucks that were making a predominant turn where you needed to make a bigger radius there and you would need that, that extra, that extra real estate to accommodate the radius and then the subsequent sidewalk that's behind it.
I guess I understand the theory, I'm just asking about the process of building within what they're about to have to be required to dedicate in the future. If it was something y'all were okay with, what would be the process of doing that?
Well, if the city engineer decides that a radius is required and the plat has to show a dedication in the future, in order to vacate that dedication, they have to apply to the city council for right-of-way vacation and then they may have to also come back to the planning commission to get a new plat approved showing that that has been vacated and incorporating it into the lot.
It's complicated to untangle it.
That's what I'm saying, if they are required to make that dedication, it's really hard to go the other way eventually. Even if, but you're saying you may decide whether or not it actually is required, but if they subdivide this and record it, that dedication is there and they have to go through vacation to get rid of it?
If we don't, if this commission doesn't, you know, strike that, strike that comment. I mean, I think the challenge is that comment is a standard comment that goes in almost every, every review of a downtown structure, it's just, it's a standard comment. And the heartburn, I think, is always, should that comment be in there because Downtown Alliance often comes down here and once it, once it's struck. And I think we've pretty consistently struck that, struck that, you know, as the commission has struck that requirement. But it's also forced, you know, the engineering staff and the traffic staff and the planning staff to go back and look at that corner and make sure that it's not required. Because we do find sometimes that things just aren't built within the cities right-of-way. Sometimes, you know, you just, it just, it forces that hard look because if we don't get it at this table, it's impossible for us to go back in and revisit it at a later date.
So you're saying it should be decided today whether or not it's needed?
Oh, absolutely, and I mean, and I'm going to recommend that that line item be struck because I don't think, I don't think it's needed but, because I know that it's been looked at, but I think the, leaving that, that comment in there is important because it forces the engineer record, you know, to look at it on the owner's behalf and make sure and it forces the discussion of whether or not that, that dedication is actually needed or not. Okay. Hope that made sense to you.
Thank you.
Bring this one in for a landing, anyone have further comments for or against agenda item seven? For or against? Moving on, agenda item eight. Four fifty-six Civic Center Drive, downtown mobile area Chamber of Commerce. Recommended tentative approval with eleven listed conditions, is the applicant present? For the record, this is the next agenda item.
Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying, representing the applicant. So we've reviewed everything, I've been back and forth with staff multiple times on this application over the last few days. Same, same item we just discussed. Item number one about waiving the corner radius dedications. I think this is very appropriate for that. We have walls that have been in place, parking infrastructure, buildings for, I don't know, fifty, sixty years. So I'm asking that the, the planning commission waive that requirement of dedication, so basically strike item number one. And just as a point of clarification, just on a few things. Item number four, that's kind of been a hot topic item. This kind of comes back to that declaration of what is, what is the frontage? So this building that sits there, they, all of their parking is contained in that L-shaped Lot Two. Come back to that. So this is the chambers parking area, that split is at the top of a ridge, drainage goes both directions. We picked that as a good spot based on existing striping and drainage. And all of their parking is there, so every staff member parks in that parking lot where Lot Two is shown and they come through a, an entranceway on the east side which actually faces Hamilton Street. Now, when the staff reviewed this, they looked at Google Street View and you can clearly see that there's an entryway on Civic Center Drive. But it's not the primary access, the foot traffic that comes through this, ninety-nine percent of this comes through that location, this is a block wall, most of you are probably familiar with this property. So everyone that comes in comes off the, what would be really the east side or facing South Hamilton. Therefore, we are declaring that to be the frontage and believe that is the frontage based on that foot traffic and what would be considered. So basically asking that instead of this, maybe a rewording of this to identify very common with like item number three, are we being asked to call a primary frontage? I'm asking that maybe item number four state for Lot Two, that the primary frontage be deemed South Hamilton Street, which allows us not to have to go to the Board of Adjustment for this waiver that's really unnecessary and would allow us to move forward today with the subdivision and get this property sold to the existing tenant that's there in that building.
Do we know what the current address is, I mean, what's the current street address for the?
Well, the application is addressed at four fifty-six Civic Center Drive and I believe that's the number that's on the building front facing Civic Center Drive.
But in the application before, we talked about the address wasn't the importance, it was the door that was being used for the primary entrance, is that something staff has heartburn about or are they okay with making South Hamilton the primary?
So, for example, if we were doing new construction, the primary entrance to the building has to face whatever the primary street frontage is for the property. There is an existing entry to the building approximately here facing Civic Center Drive. And as Mr. Orrell pointed out, there's also an entrance here that accesses the parking lot. You know, the intent would be that a building is up close to the property line, you walk in off the sidewalk into the main entry to the building versus the entrance is set back a hundred and ten feet from your South Hamilton Street property line and you have to walk through a parking lot to get it. That's the intent of the Downtown Development District regulations. So in this case, why we were recommending the variance is if the primary frontage is determined to be Civic Center Drive, the lot width in this T four sub-district is not to exceed a hundred and twenty feet and they're creating a lot that would be two hundred and twenty feet wide. So Mr. Orrell's argument is that by instead making South Hamilton the primary frontage, that relieves them from any variance requirement because the lot width will then comply with the Downtown Development District requirements.
It seems like a reasonable workaround, is that something staff is okay with or think is something reasonable that we could approve?
We'll let the planning commission make that decision.
Perfect. I just think when we think about front, like in your own office, like where do you, where do you go in? And to me, that's the primary use, I met with the home, the, excuse me, the future owner of this, that's the door he came out of to speak with, I mean, all of their staff parks there, they're a staffing company, there's not a lot of in and out traffic, you know, it's through the phone. So to me, that is the front and I would just ask that you consider that, allow us to move forward.
I think that going forward, you need to consider how the building is currently addressed because how the building is currently addressed is, was probably the intent to be the frontage. Realize it can be all different ways, but that, that's what the, you know, front door is the front door of your address. You know, your address, your house is not on the side, your side street, so that's, there's another perspective, that's what I'm trying to make.
Any further comments on agenda item eight, for? Anyone against? Anyone against? Seeing none, we'll move on. Number 9, 400, 530 and 660 Dunlap Drive, Pinto Island Industrial Park subdivision. Recommended tentative approval with 7 listed condition. Is the applicant present? In agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement. Anyone here to speak for Agenda Item Number 9? Anyone here to speak against Agenda Item 9? Number 10, 2065 Forest Lane, Forest Lane Estates. It's a subdivision. Recommended tentative approval with 13 listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd?
Gary Byrd, Burt's surveying, 2609 Halls Mill Road, Mobile. Condition 3, uh, dedication of right-of-way for an unopened street. Of course, I'd like to do away with that totally. 20-foot street, unopened subdivision that is in, is probably 80 years old, never has been open. But on the other side, I would like to ask for a larger building setback that would accommodate a future widening. That would be 25 foot plus, um, 15 feet, 35-foot building setback from Kentwood and, which has been done on residential subdivisions before. And that would allow if and when anyone wanted to build that road right-of-way with, or no building would be built in the way of it. But, um, that would, that would work just as well.
So you're act, do you have a specific recommendation or proposal for Number 3, 30 feet down to?
Number 3 is the only one.
Right. But then on the other side, along Kentwood, 25 plus 15, right? Did I hear that correctly?
Well, if we had to dedicate it, we would have to dedicate 15 feet and then show a, yeah, I said all that wrong. We'd have to dedicate 15 feet and a 25-foot building setback. So we're asking for a 40-foot building setback back there. And still leave the note about, uh, Lots 1 and 2 denied access.
You're asking to waive the 30-foot dedication and replace it with a 45-foot building setback?
That's wrong in Number 3. I wouldn't have to dedicate 30 feet.
From the center line?
Right, 30 feet from the center line. And is, okay.
I guess if the, if the lots are denied access to Kentwood, you, are, are you really just looking for a rear setback? I mean, I think, is that what the intent is? To make sure that something's not built right on top of Kentwood? I mean, if they're, they can't have both if they're denied.
Well, 2046, it'd be 20 and 25 behind you. Of course, you have Kentwood making a 90-degree turn and it becomes substandard and it's also not open. Uh, if that right-of-way is no longer required, uh, both property owners or all surrounding property owners could consider having it vacated as an option. Uh, but since it is still shown as a right-of-way, typical staff comment is to require dedication of at least half of what would typically be required to meet a minimum standard right-of-way. Plus, since it is a street frontage, subdivision regulations would require the standard 25-foot setback from that street frontage.
That piece that's not open, do we know how wide that is on the 90-degree bend, heading towards the water?
I think it's 20 feet, Nick.
20 feet? Where it says not open, is that 20, I think that's 20 feet?
Yep. I do want to point out Condition Number 9. I don't know if you've looked at that. Condition Number 9 talks about for Lot 1, which is the one closest to the river on Forest Lane. There is discussion of a turnaround.
Yeah, a turnaround. We can, we can deal with that wording. We can talk to city engineering at that point.
And fire department.
And fire department, whoever.
Yeah, so, so you understand this, this configuration is going to either have to have a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac, you know, to accommodate.
Yeah, the, what I'm thinking, not a cul-de-sac, not a hammerhead, but one that would turn and go down and then go out utilizing, um, the extension of the road. There's one, I think, approval for a fire truck turnaround that would come over 60 feet, just like a, uh, here.
The far, the far western, western end of Forest Lane, it looks like the right-of-way flares out. So it's, it's got a kind of weird shape to it.
Something to, yeah. Be something like this in lieu of a hammerhead. Fire truck would come up, turn in, back out and go.
That, that's a hammerhead.
Well, I thought a hammerhead went both ways.
That, that, that's a hammerhead.
Whatever, okay.
But anyway, you understand that the, the, the shape of the lots that you have them are probably not exactly how, how, how they would be. They'll have to be configured to accommodate.
Okay. Real quick, are we clear on what, Mr. Byrd, what you're asking for on Number 3? I want to make sure before we walk away that we understand, or, Bert?
I believe he's requesting a setback in lieu of any dedication along this unopened right-of-way to the rear. So that would be possible dedication dimension plus the 25-foot setback that we would typically require, rather than actually dedicating any length.
Yeah, it would need to be 30, 55 feet from the center line of Kentwood. Isn't that right? 30 feet and 25-foot building setback from the center line.
That sounds correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, from, from, from where the center line would be. So wherever that number's going to fall, it's, you got to figure it out.
Can we do a setback from the center line?
Is it? Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number 10? Yes, sir? You got more?
No.
Okay. He's raised his hand to speak for Agenda Item Number 10. Please come down, please come down to the podium and you state your name and address with the minutes and we can answer questions.
Curtis Polk, 1377 East Riviera, but also own the end of Kentwood Lane. Uh, I just want to make sure that Provision 5 stays in place because the actual property we were talking about is wetland and it's inaccessible to build on eventually anyway. Uh, because if they come in and put something in future on the backside of those lots, it's going to push all that water back on me. It drains through there into Dog River.
There was no discussion on Mr. Byrd's comments on Number 5, was there? No. So as it, as it states, Mr. Polk, if, if this goes through, once, once voted on, Number 5 stays in play?
That's funny.
Anyone else here to speak for or against Agenda Item 10? Agenda Item 11, new sidewalk waiver application at 664 Shelby Street. First Hopewell Baptist Church. Staff has recommended denial of the sidewalk waiver application. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, uh, there have been discussions going on regarding this site and the request itself. Uh, staff would like to request instead of a denial, a holdover for one month to allow, um, city engineering, the applicant and, uh, the council member for this district to discuss options about how the sidewalk can be built and if that is amenable to the applicant.
Did you hear that, sir? Okay, uh, recommended for a holdover for further discussion so that, uh, solutions can be found. All right, you're in agreement with that recommendation of a holdover for one month? All right.
And that would be April 6.
April 6. Anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number 11? Anyone here to speak against it? At this time, we'll close the public hearing session. We will move into deliberation amongst the commissioners. Back to Agenda Item 1, 3603 Kent Road, Pinewood River subdivision. Recommended for denial. Applicant and engineer were present. Lots of discussion. Any further comments or questions from commissioners?
I'm going to propose that we waive the subdivision regulations and allow the, um, reduced lot sizes. Uh, understand the commentary regarding the storm drainage, but I think it's unlikely that 4,000-square-foot impervious structures built on these lots. Also understand that if this trend were to happen continuously, it could cause substandard storm drainage. But I think, and I may ask Mr. Roswell, I don't believe this commission creates precedent with any decisions. Is that correct?
It do.
They're each, I mean, they're each on their own merit, are they not?
They should be, yes, but doing this for, for one piece of property here sets precedent for what might, might happen.
I'm assuming there's no HOA.
And I'm, and I believe the impervious area.
That's probably correct. I will suggest that should the, uh, commission consider approving this request, that it be subject to engineering, traffic engineering, urban forestry and fire comment as standard, standard comment.
But don't we consider impervious area, the driveways as well?
What was the question? Uh, impervious area includes, uh, any hard surface, roof, driveway, shed.
Although the house isn't 4,000, if the driveway was set back far enough, we would reach that, that threshold.
You know, and that probably becomes the appeal of these larger lots like that is that you have, you know, you have the ability to, you have more space, you have more land to do things. So I mean, that's the appeal of it, but, you know, again, you, you, you do the whole neighborhood like that, every single lot in there. You change the character of it. And I know we don't, this, this body doesn't change, we don't deal with cosmetics or character. But it's a, it's a neighborhood of, of ranch-style houses. And if you change it to 50-foot lots, now you're going to be shotgun-style narrow houses. So you effectively are changing the character. Uh, I, I, I understand all the challenges with it and I, and I appreciate, uh, my colleague's position on it. But it just, it's, I personally don't think it's appropriate.
The overall position here is it is hard to find new lots to redevelop with the rules that are in place. And so if we're not allowing lots like this to be re-subdivided and to be rethought and think about them creatively, all we're doing is spurring greenfield development, which creates the same issues that we're complaining about, infrastructure costs and, um, numerous other issues. So I think it's reasonable to think creatively about a one-lot subdivision that we're discussing the difference of 10 feet, um, 5 feet on each, you know, each lot line, 20 feet total is pretty marginal when we have someone that's ready and willing to build two new houses in an area that doesn't see a lot of new development.
The problem is this, and it goes back to what Nick just said. And number one, we do set precedent with this. Number two, people buy into a community the way that it is currently established. And when that starts changing, then we're forcing change on a neighborhood that has no voice to oppose that, the way we're doing it right now. I'm all for new construction. I'm all, all for new growth. But we, when we go into an established neighborhood with, with home lots, there's about 50 home lots just south of Clubhouse Road. And when you start doing this to one, if anybody else wants to start doing this, then you change the overall dynamic of that entire neighborhood. And we start impacting the decisions people have made to purchase homes there based off of the environment that they chose to, to move into. Again, I've seen this happen on East Drive. And it is, in theory, this sounds great. And I'm telling you, in, in reality, it does not look right. It doesn't feel right. It doesn't sell. And it, it, it really deteriorates the overall makeup of the entire community when that happens. And, and that's just one build. And I don't know what this is going to look like. But I, I think it creates some significant challenges. I, I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to take place with the neighborhood before this ever happened, before we would ever vote on it. And I think the neighborhood should have a voice before we make a decision that's going to impact.
I understand the councilman's comments, but I would challenge him to look at the map where there's vacant lots within, there's four vacant lots within what can only be 300 feet or so. Um, so I don't think the current system is working for the neighborhood. But it sounds like we're, you know, headed towards a denial, which is fine. But I do think this is something we should study harder because it is, uh, it's going to consistently be an issue in this city.
Any further comments or questions from commissioners? I don't know, I do not think we have a, a motion on the floor.
You had, you had a motion, but it wasn't seconded.
I'm a, I'm motion to allow the subdivision and remove the subdivision requirements, um, maintaining comments for fire, traffic and engineering.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
The, the opposed have it. Motion is denied. We still need a motion for staff recommendation.
Move to deny.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The ayes have it for the denial. Number 2, 650 Michigan Avenue, recommended for tentative approval. Nine listed conditions. We'll take them separately. Thank you. Alabama Power subdivision. Applicant was present and in agreement. So on the subdivision, entertain a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Subdivision passes. Rezone recommendation. Recommended for approval. Applicant was present and in agreement.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 3, northwest corner of Range Line Service Road and Demetropolis Road. Subdivision and PUD, recommended for tentative approval. Applicant was present and in agreement on the subdivision.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the subdivision passes. PUD, recommended for approval with five findings of fact and six listed conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations adopting findings of facts A, B, C, D and E.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the PUD passes. Extension at 54, 5400 Hamilton Boulevard, subdivision and PUD. Is it okay to combine these?
Yes.
Entertain a motion for the extension for one year.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. New subdivision application, number 5, 265 and 515 South Royal Street, CSA Container Yard. Recommended for tentative approval with eight listed conditions. Was some discussion on Condition Number 3.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, for this one, uh, the 20-foot setback allowance along South Royal Street would require a waiver of Section, uh, BD9 or the 5D9. And then to waive the major street dedication requirement, that would be BD14.
I'll make that motion as staff just commented.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 6, 101 East I-65 Service Road, Walmart subdivision. Number six, one oh one East I sixty-five Service Road, Walmart subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, uh, one error by staff on the previous one, we forgot to note that with the twenty-foot setback, we wanted to give them the option of getting a variance on that. If, if the Planning Commission is interested in doing that, that was, uh, condition number three.
Oh, amend, amend my motion to allow on number three, the option of a variance request?
Second?
Amended motion for condition three. Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, one oh one East I sixty-five Service Road, Walmart subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with eight listed conditions. Applicant was present and in agreement.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number seven, seven sixty-five St. Anthony Street and one sixty-three North Bayou, Envision Legacy subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval with eleven listed conditions. Multiple discussions around frontage, corners.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, striking, uh, item one and modifying item seven to allow applicant to go before the Board of Adjustment.
Chairman, on this one, uh, I also noticed that for condition number six, it says placement on the note stating that Lot One may only have a curb cut from St. Anthony Street. That actually should be North Bayou Street. Correct word, and so there you would want to also add the variance option.
Yes, I'll, I'll amend my motion to, to include that.
Did the applicant hear that? All right. Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for number seven passes. Number eight, four fifty-six Civic Center Drive, Downtown Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with eleven listed conditions. Applicant is present, multiple discussions again on similar topics. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve, uh, removing staff recommendation number one and allowing Lot Two's primary frontage to be South Hamilton, which will remove their requirement for a Board of Adjustment variance.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number nine, four hundred, five thirty, and six sixty Dunlap Drive, Pinto Island Industrial Park subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with seven listed conditions. The applicant is still present and in agreement on all conditions. Entertain a motion?
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, twenty sixty-five Forest Lane, Forest Lane Estates subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with thirteen listed conditions. Applicant was present, is, is still present. Uh, commentary specific to number three, condition, dedication, uh, potential setback, and then Kentwood Lane setback.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation, modifying note number three to require a fifty-five-foot setback from the center line of Kentwood Lane.
Properly moved and seconded. Uh, comments from here, does that address the? We only need to address number three, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Properly moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So, the public hearing session is, is closed and we're in deliberation. Um, number eleven, six sixty-four Shelby Street. Applicant is present and in agreement on a one-month holdover. Entertain a motion? April sixth.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for holdover until April sixth passes. Any further commentary or business from staff?
Uh, just to let you know that the new Unified Development Code is in effect as of yesterday, as are the new subdivision regulations. Uh, both documents are available through the buildmobile.org website, uh, under Documents Associated with Planning. Uh, we will also be providing you with revised books for the meeting.
Thank you, Bert. Meeting adjourned.